Howdy all, Mindless Prizes, welcome back to some more My Time at Portia. Let's go ahead and go back. Linda, listen, it's time to play more. Level 7 Linda at the cottage. Aw yeah, so, right now, our big goal is we need a lot of wood, because we need a lot of fuel, so that we can make ourselves a lot of copper blades. We might need some, um, stones, right? Power stones for this thing, we crafted that. Uh, how many copper bars we got? 3, perfect, let's make another copper blade. Uh, and we need 4 of the copper blades, um, for the quests that we have. We have 2 days, 23 hours left of fuel, so that's good. So we'll be able to get through all of our copper. So it is just kind of about like putting in as much copper as we can right now. Um, copper bars, let's make more. Perfect, um, we have so much copper on us, we have 76 on us and we still have 10 in there. That's great, um, how many copper blades do I have on me right now? Just the one, alright, so it doesn't matter right now. So that's our main goal today, and then the other goal is we need to get ourselves some wood. Uh, and beyond that, let me think about what we would like to try and get done today. Because obviously wood is a huge priority for us, we need lots of fuel. Um, because that's the thing we keep running out of. We would like to upgrade our workbench at some point. How many old tools am I rocking, or old parts rather? 4, we need 5 I think, and like 2 grand. So it's gonna be a couple of commissions that need to get finished, um, in order for us to get the, um, to be able to afford the workshop, workbench, dealio. Um, so right now, we're just gonna get a bunch of wood. We're at the point now where we're leveling up, where we're gonna be like focusing on our, we talked about this last time, our stamina, that's our main goal. Um, so that's good, I need to kick some trees, look for some cocoons. I need 2 cocoons to get the, um, what do you call them? The fishing pole, so we're gonna definitely be on the lookout for that. Let's get a little bit of fiber as well. I should probably look into what it's gonna take to make some new clothes, I think that'd be good. But, uh, overall, we're just continuing along with the journey, y'all. I hope y'all are having a wonderful day, I'm having a great one. Ah, there we go, um, just been playing this most of the day, most of the afternoon, in between a couple of other things I'm working on. And, uh, I really enjoy the heck out of this game. I'm actually thinking I might start a file that I can play solo, um, off-camera, just so I can kind of like explore the game a little bit more in-depth and not have to push this, um, this, uh, file too far before, um, you know, I get to see y'all's feedback. Because oftentimes I find myself, oh, I don't have enough space. What? Uh, okay, I have a lot of stuff in my inventory, whoops. And that's, okay, well, we'll be back. Now it looks like fertilizer, let's go put some stuff away. Got lots of wood, so let's go max out the fuel on our, um, copper bars being made. Um, yeah, you can see the little inventory is full thing blinking down there. It's crazy how quickly you can do that, uh, let's fill this up for sure. No, 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 I meant to, no, I meant to, thank you, fill that up, thank you. Okay, now, let's put some stuff away. Um, old parts, we do have 5, that's great. Um, what else we got? The discs can go over here, we have 7, so we're getting close there. Um, what's this, tin? Yeah, we don't need the tin right now, let's put away the stone bricks, put away some stuff. Oh, we have tons of stone, we got lots of that down in there, gotcha. Good amount of wood, that's good, oh, tin, I can double stack. Alright, um, and then, yeah, fiber, put that over there. Alright, now pick those up, okay. Let me look at the, um, what does it take to make? Oh, we can't make a bronze pickaxe if we get 2 bronze bars and an upgrade kit. So I gotta go buy an upgrade kit to get that. Uh, and a bronze axe, same deal, upgrade kits and bronze bars. So we have 5 bronze bars for those guys, so we might want to try and make 5 of those afterwards. For the practice sword, I need 3 hardwood logs, let's go ahead and make that right now, why not? Because it is better than our punchy fists, and we could sell our punchy fists if we want to. Here's our hardwood. Now, we can't get our own hardwood until we get a bronze axe, so it is something I'm gonna need. Alright, let's craft that, yep, confirm, thank you. And then what's the enhanced one cost? Tree sap, animal bones. We haven't fought an animal that gives us animal bones yet, so we're gonna be sticking with the regular practice sword for now. Um, we're gonna put this away for the moment, but we want to remember to sell that. Here's our practice sword. So let's go ahead, let's switch over to the practice sword. Now we got a little bit of space in our inventory. Let's run out this way, and we might try and fight a couple of critters that are out here as well. Um, and also axe down some things, um, for more wood. Because, uh, I do think it'd be nice for us to have like a nice big backlog of wood. Ooh, snake berries. The snake berries look like snakeberries. Um, okay, kick this, heyah! I need one more cocoon, please. Heyah! Okay, good, how about you? Heyah! Rubber fruit, something necessary. Alright, let's cut a couple of these trees while we're over here. Um, and then yeah, we need to start thinking about what we want to do like relationship-wise. Is there anybody I would like to focus our relationship efforts on? I'm not sure, um, noticing how this game, like they talk about being very inclusive and all this kind of stuff all the time, I'm assuming that, um, the genders in relationships are open. Um, so we could pursue either male or female companions in this game, I assume. I don't know for sure, um, but I think that it's a possibility. We're gonna kick every dang tree, y'all. Hey, here's that little house that's out here, I forgot about that little house. Anything drop down? Hey, got another cocoon, perfect. Alright, and I saw Papa Bear over there, whatever his name is. Uh, oh, and let's, uh, I see a couple of these ladybugs. I doubt ladybugs are gonna give us animal bones, considering ladybugs don't have bones. But, let's go, mister ladybug. What's his attack like? Alright, forward attack, he does a pretty big wind-up, so it's pretty easy to dodge, that's good. Alright, I kind of like the, um, like the way that the fists work that we had earlier. Just with like in terms of the speed, but this is definitely doing a lot of damage, so can't really complain. Oh, he throws, he actually does like a launch attack, like he actually, okay, it's good to know. Alright, let's go, can I do a charge attack? No, okay. Hua, got nothing on me, bro. Gotcha, son? Alright, yeah, we're gonna do a little bit of combat out here. Yeah, the llamas are pretty easy to take out, and their fur is quite valuable. Don't have enough space in my inventory, he says right as he gets some fur that he was just talking about. Is there anything I can drop that I don't really care about? Let's, um, how do I eat it? Right-click? Let's just eat this, get our stamina back up. Figure I might as well. Oh, I'm not gonna be able to pick up the meat, man, we really need inventory space. How much money do I have? I have 408, I could buy the inventory space. Let's do it. Now, what does this cost? Now it's 600 to get the next one, alright, I'm just gonna go ahead and buy the inventory space. We are constantly running out of inventory space, and, you know, getting it earlier rather than later, it's probably gonna help. I don't need that money for much else, uh, other than upgrading the workstation, but that's still gonna be a bit of a ways off anyway. So, why not get out ahead of it, you know? Alright, let's get all this wood. So again, do let me know what y'all are thinking of the series down below. If there's something you want to see me carry out all the way through. Um, where'd that Papa Bear go? I'd like to talk to him. See all the way up there? Let's go find him. I wonder if he has like lines and stuff, I feel like before he like didn't really say much. There he is down there. Do-do-do-do-do, do-do-do. And we can go make our, um, fishing pole, so we should do that sooner rather than later. Hey Papa Bear! Gentle bear, oaks adopt father, oh, oh! Chat! Oh! Alright, so he doesn't say much, that's okay. Alright, what are you? Snailab? Okay, let's, um, oh, you know what? Let's fight some sea urchins, might be able to get some spikes. Oh, that was an attack? That's right, you just attack right off the bat. 1, 2, 3, roll. 1, 2, alright, gotcha, spines, cool. Um, we still need the, what was this stuff? I need bones, animal bones, what do I think is gonna drop bones? Must be something in the mines or something, because like, I feel like we've fought everything out here that seems like it would give you bones. Alright, now we're getting seeds all the time when we pick up poop, so I feel like it's one of those things that like, until you unlock the ability to make the planters, you, um, don't get it. Speaking of planter boxes, maybe we should try and make some of those as well. Get working on that quest while we're waiting on all of our copper to smelt up. We now have a nice stack of wood, I imagine. 83 wood, that's some pretty good amount of fuel, I would think. Um, so we'll get our butt out this way, walking on home. Um, and we'll see what it's gonna take us to make some planter boxes. Um, this has been a quick day, I'm looking at the time on my, uh, recording right now. This has been a quick day, so we may, um... QQ! Look at him! Oh my dear, how cute are you, QQ? Oh my goodness, so cute, so cute, what are you painting? Gosh, QQ, I'm sorry that you got such a butt-head for a, for a master. He seems like such a butt-head all the time. Nah, that's fine, alright, um, crafting complete on 2 copper blades. Got a couple of copper bars. Let's, uh, craft up 2 more. Now, as far as the small planter box goes, animal feces, wooden board, that's right. So we still need to make this sucker, so let's go ahead, what's it gonna take? 5 stone bricks. Do we have any stone bricks left over? We have 2, so I do need to still also smelt up some stone bricks. So we're gonna take this, uh, the copper blades that we do have, and we are gonna use those for quest-related things. So if I'm looking at my quests, we need 4 for the commerce commission, so once this is done, we'll be able to get that. Then we need 3 for the other dude, then we need 2 for this guy. So we'll, we'll get there soonish. Um, copper bars, let's, let's get this, still doing maximum copper. And then we'll go for bronze, because I would like to get the next level axe and the next level pick. Okay, we still have a good chunk of stamina left, um, and I don't want to waste it. Y'all know me, I don't want to waste the stamina. So let's chop some more things. Oh, well, let's make the, uh, let's make the friggin', the fishing pole. Okay. Uh, just need one copper bar. Gimme, thank you. Perfect. Craft, craft, got it. Alright, where is he? He's right here, that's what I thought. Kiwa, what up, bro?
This is one wicked-looking rod. Thanks a bunch, mate. Here, I have some extra lure. Maybe you'll enjoy fishing as much as me.
Cool, cool, so, we made him the fishing rod, now if we want to fish, we're gonna need to make another one. I don't really need that right now. Um, let's put away the extra lure that he gave us. Uh, let's put away these, spines, cloth. What else we got? Poops. Uh, got some pumpkin seeds, we got lots of pumpkin seeds. Um, sand is in the other one, I guess? Okay, we got soil, so... What is it again that we need? Wood boards, right, right, right. Okay, um, we have 2 more power stones, that's great, so we have 4 power stones total, so that's great. Uh, let's get, uh, what else we got going on? Kind of want to make a second, um, once we finish the, um, sawmill thing, I kind of want to make a second, um, furnace. And I think I did that in my other Let's Play as well, because it really does help to be able to do that faster. What is this, a bug egg? The egg of a common beetle outside the city, some fish especially, look, ah, it's lure, okay. Uh, how do we unlock these? Is this just for a bigger, just for a bigger one? What's with this? Hard, clear, and smooth, the best type of optics. It must be useful for something, because it's not even worth that much. Uh, oh, fast exchange to right-click, awesome. Aha, I was wondering, I was like, there's gotta be a way to do this quicker. Um, sort, really quick, always sort, okay. Sap can go in there, alright, back to this one. We'll put this nail shell in there, we'll put this in there. Um, fibers in there, wood will keep on us because we keep needing it. Sand, uh, and meat is in none of the, oh, that's right, I took the meat out for, that's right, I remember. Alright, this out, okay, let's grab some, y'all, because we will start doing that soonish. Okay, uh, what time is it? 18:29, we got a little bit of time. Let's, um, oh, we got mail, I didn't even check the mail today, y'all. From City Hall, we have some important announcements tonight, fireside meeting at Peach Plaza, please try to make it 7pm sharp, oh gosh, that's like right now. Ooh, glad I checked that, that's like right now. We got like 15 minutes and then that thing pops up, perfect, we'll get to meet people that we haven't seen yet. Um, maybe find our potential soulmate, who knows? But here we go, 7pm sharp, look at this, perfect timing. What is up, my buddy?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Gale!
We've been having lots of panbat sightings recently. I know they're cute, but still, don't go near them, they're dangerous. I've asked the civil corps to try something to scare them off, but I'm not holding up much hope. We all know what a panbat infestation's like. Sometimes, I wish I had a tank. In other news, we've decided to proceed with the building of a bridge to Amber Island. Also, we are in preparations for the construction of the DD transportation system. I'll be securing the funding over the coming weeks and pick a builder soon. Any donations are welcome.
What? How come I didn't hear about the bridge? When was this?
Cry about it Higgins, you jerk! Oh, now I finally get to fish there!
He's asking for money again.
Finally, we have a new builder in town this week who lives in the old workshop outside the city gate. Let's all give a warm welcome.
Aw, thanks, even Higgins, the butt-head. Hi Martha, nice to meet you.
When will Toby let me not worry for just one?
She's adorable, oh, Toady. Starlight, hey, you see, out there on the horizon is a great place to fish. I used to fish there all day when we still had a working boat to go out there with. Cool, well, I'm gonna build you a bridge. Polly, we've met. Ginger, who are you? Uh, one of Gale's daughters.
It's so nice to meet you, I'm Ginger. I hope you find our little town fitting.
You're a little creepy, Ginger, but maybe you're just quiet.
We're all very simple and friendly folks. I really enjoy having a conversation with everyone.
Cool. Alright, anybody else we didn't meet? A lot of people just scattered like right away. Uh, I would totally finish your commission job, bro, but, uh, I'd rather save up for the one that actually has a time limit on it. Alice!
I haven't seen you around, you are?
Hi Alice, amateur novelist, that's cool.
Have you ever visited my garden? Isn't it beautiful?
I have not visited it, but I will have to in the future. So neat, alright. Oh, who's Isaac, hello?
Hello, you're the new builder, I suppose. I hope you're wiser and more reasonable than the other foolish builder in town.
You mean Higgins, the butt-head?
The book is the ladder of human progress. So young one, read more and think more.
I like you, Isaac. Alright, let's move on, we've met most of these people, hey Gust.
That Sunday fireside makes me sleepy.
Feel like I need to always make sure to like talk to everybody I see, just like boost that relationship just a little bit, let's look at our relationships actually. Couple of them are actually probably a little bit up there, yeah, Presley, we're getting up there. We're still strangers with everyone. Oh, look, you can see there's hearts, so yeah, we can, so Emily, um, Kiwa, or Chiwa, excuse me, Dr. Shu, not Carol. Albert, Sonia, Django, Polly, no, not Polly. Gust, Nora, Phyllis, Alice, Remington. Ginger, Vua, Toady, Oaks, oh, Ginger is, oh, okay, I thought she was like really young. Um, who else? QQ, I'm a strange, I could talk to QQ and become a friend. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna build our relationship a lot, and then there's still a ton of people to meet, that's great. Oh, you guys, I'm excited. How high could we jump? Ugh! Uh-uh, not high enough. Unless we can park or, huh, huh! Oh, check, what's this? Power on, dangerous, do not touch, alright. For now. Um, alright, it's pretty late, we're gonna need to go to bed soon. Didn't really use a lot of my stamina, that's fine. We did get to meet some people. Let's go ahead, let's check our stuff real fast, got another copper, couple copper blades, awesome. Uh, copper bar, how are we doing? Don't have enough for another one of these, that's fine. Let's, um, can I get to the commission station in time? Because if I can, then what I'll do is I'll take the 2 that I've got now, and we're gonna use those towards our, um, uh, what do you call that thing? The, closed, okay. Um, the saw blade, the sawmill thing. Hey Presley, sorry to bump ya.
If you work hard, I need...
Do-do-do, they all seem to only have like 1 or 2 lines that they speak, um, when you talk to them, which, that makes sense, early access, plus they have to do a lot of, uh, recording and stuff, I'm sure, and writing, so, alright, let's head off to bed, we're gonna do another day. Why not? Okay, moving on, commerce is about to expire, don't worry about it, bro. Don't give me that ish. Alright, got a bunch of those. Let's, um, get 2 more of these crafting up. Perfect. Okay, after you're done, fuel depleted, ah, well, don't worry about it, we got it. So after you're done, okay, you gotta wait for it to do the copper first. Uh, once that's done, we're gonna do bronze. Let's see. I'm Dawa, the keeper of the Porsche tree farm. The last storm we had blew down some of the fencing, we're closing until it's fixed, so I need you to help me fix it as soon as possible. We'll need 5 wooden boards, thank you. Oh, okay, so I have, I need 5 boards for Dawa, and he needs them, it looked like it said like within 10 days or something, hey Sonia!
The beverages here are all good.
Yep, same thing, every time. Good to see you again, I love your earrings, super cute. Hey Higgins, you friggin' butt-face.
What is it? Time is...
Time is money, friend!
It's not even open yet, alright, what time is it? 7:45, it'll be open soon, let's talk to Remington. What's up, buddy?
We're sort of a frontier town. If you go west from here, you'd hit the peripheries in a hurry. Sometimes a weird monster will show up all the way from there. So you have to be careful at all times.
That's interesting. I wonder if that would happen, like a, kind of like a monster event kind of deal. Alright, we're just gonna chill over here, let's go say hi to Lee, what up, Lee?
Have you ever heard of the story about the dancing robot? This happened several years ago in Ephira. A robot was found in the ruins and brought into town. The robot only...
I think we've heard that story before. Alright, 5 minutes. Who dis, said Django? Ooh, you wanna spar later? I'll hit ya, I'll hit ya!
Not sword, is it? It's justice and...
Hey Pinky, meow meow? Meow meow. I should gift Pinky some, uh, milk. Alright, let's go finish our commerce quest. Wait, am I not done? It was here, right?
Talk to you soon, my...
I thought we talked to Antoine to finish them. Did I have to go give them to the actual person? Hold on. Alright, hold on, hold on, hold on. Because last one we gave to Antoine, didn't we? Oh, no, yeah, I gotta go give it to Sam. Alright, where is Sam? She's up here, well, let's mark that and go try and find her. Okay, interesting, I mean, that's cool though, it'll give me an excuse to like go and talk to people, and we'll get that relationship boost, so that's great. Where's she moving to? She's like around here somewhere, oh, there she is, hello!
Haven't seen you around, where you from?
Thanks, if you're in any trouble, don't hesitate to ask our civil corps for help. So she's a civil corps person, that's cool. Let's chat with her.
Yo kid, looking good. Be careful in the ruins. Don't expect me to save your butt every time.
Oh my gosh, I love her, she's great, Sam's great. Alright, cool, so we finished that one. Now, let's get, let's go back, we should be able to make our, uh, hey Isaac, say hello to Isaac.
Time is light, so enjoy.
Ha, enjoy your time in Portia and don't waste mine, that's awesome. Okay, heading back, get the stuff to make the things. Hey Sam! Oh man, I'm gonna spend so much of my time just talking to people and not getting stuff done. Look out, almost hit me, I'm sorry! How about that planter box? Yeah, I'm working on it, don't worry. I gotta make the, the, the thing. Hey, we leveled up, awesome. Let's, uh, skills to pay the bills, more toughness. Yeah, that's what it's all about. Okay, gimme your copper bars, uh, gimme your copper blades. Let's grab these, do here, okay. Uh, and, oh, that's right, alright, so we're gonna give it the blades. And then we need to make, um, the bricks, so we actually do need to do that next. I would cancel these, but I think that we just like lose resources, so I don't want to do that. So after this, instead of doing bronze, after doing the copper, instead of doing bronze, we will do, um, uh, stone bricks, we'll finish this, we'll cut the boards, that'll help us to finish the one thing. So while we wait, what time is it right now? It's 10:30, we have plenty of time. I say we go back into the mines. Do we have any money? Oh yeah, yeah, we just got some from the commission. Let's go check if there's another commission that we can easily do. If there's another one that's like just make wood storage, done, man. We have tons of wood, and, uh, that'd be easy to do. Presley, Antoine, what up? Alright, what you got for me? It's for Wooa, 6 roasted meats, I don't have a roaster yet, so I can't do that. 2 basic skivers, I'm working on my own right now, so I can't really get that done for you. Uh, we at home need 3 talismans, please fulfill this commission. Talismans, talismans. I know they can be made, I don't know the recipe off the top of my head. I can't, can I look at recipes while I'm here? Like while I'm out and about? Nah, uh, items catalog, here we go. Um, this is neat. Food, furniture, others, talismans. How do I? I'd like to see the recipe. Maybe assembly index? No, no, this is for assembly station. Alright, so it doesn't tell me the recipes, so I gotta go back and check it. Um, or at least I don't know how to check the recipes. Do-do-do, that's fine, not that far. But yeah, if those are easy to make, then I'll do that. Wood and marble, they need 3 of them? I might have the ability to do that just like right away. Let's go ahead and do it. I think they said 3. If it's more than that, then I'm gonna need to go get some marble. Craft all 3, these kind of gifts as well. Um, so I could give talismans to people if I made some. Do-do-do-do-do. But yeah, if we can just grab this and then immediately finish it, that'd be pretty cool. It's for a certain person though, so we need to, um, go take the stuff to them, I believe. Alright, so it is for Carol. 3 talismans, done. Alright, so where's Carol? Do-do-do-do, what's, uh, what's that, this thing? Ah, okay, it's just like a handbook kind of deal. Okay, is she, um, Mars's husband? Or wife? Partner? Uh, Russo, hello, you're the butler guy, right? Yeah. Still learning, everybody. Oh, there you are, Martha, that's where you work. Beka. Portia Times, it's a barber shop, ooh, I wonder if we can cut our hair? Alright, uh, let's go talk to Carol, and let's see what it's gonna cost to buy upgrade kits. Uh, commerce commission, great work, thank you! That was easy money, what do we get? Couple hundred gold, nice. Upgrade kit costs 234 for 1. So if we wanted to upgrade our pickaxe, once we get some bronze, we could totally do that. Oh, you could buy power stones too, neat. Now how much would you give me for wood? 5 gold, or 5 wood for 1 gold, so yeah, see, it's obviously not worth that much. What about raw copper? 1 for 1, 1 for 2, copper blade, 20 minus 1. Why minus 1? Interesting. Um, so that's cool, so you, oh, market price, I see, there's a market price. So you can totally like sell things to people. Um, it's like, so for example, like I bet you a copper bar is not worth too much, right? Maybe it's worth like 5, but you turn 2 copper, uh, bars into 1 copper blade, you make 20 bucks. So it's like there is a bit of a trade mechanic in here. Um, okay, cool. So upgrade kits are 240-ish. Hi, Alice! Just wanna chat. She's cute. Just kinda like, just like loves her flowers. What up, Oaks? Oaks! He's adorable, too. They're all adorable. Hey, Sonia, did I say hi to you today? I know I said hi to you yesterday. Okay, I must have. It's just literally the same thing every time. Okay. Moving on with the song. Okay. Now, how's our stuff coming along? Got another one of those, so we have two. Need like one more. Not enough for that. Alright, we got four hours, so those are done, so let's do a couple of other things. Um, we could go down into the mines. How am I doing on space in my inventory? We're good. Let's go down into the mines for a bit. We'll get more, um... We'll get more, uh, minerals, maybe get some more old parts, which we definitely need. Again, we're still working towards getting that two grand, so that we can, uh, upgrade our worktable thing, workstation, workbench, whatever you call it. Um, so that'll be a thing. Abandoned ruins, let's do it! But I figure the more old stuff that we find... Let's go this way. Cause we haven't really gone over this way before. Alright. Does it say there's any more close by? No, looks like that's the one. Okay. All that stone. Oh, more data discs! Oh, pretty soon we're gonna be able to make so many seeds? My goodness. Or buy so many seeds, rather, with the data discs. What've you got here? Another fan! Oh man, we're gonna have so many fans now, I'll probably sell that one. We got one inside our, our home, we don't need more, in my opinion. Let's get tons of copper and tin. Definitely important, cause I really wanna upgrade our tools soon. Like, if we can get the opportunity, I'd like to. And all we gotta do is we gotta afford the, um, upgrade kits, which, you know, it's gonna cost us a total of like four or five hundred bucks, which is not ideal, um, cause we do wanna upgrade our worktable, but it's kinda one of those things you go like, is it worth it to be able to mine the higher level stuff earlier? Right, we can break those bigger rocks, we'll mine other stuff faster. So it's like, there's some, there's some potential benefits that you can think of, you know? Okay, there's that one. Oh, that one's close. Let's go this one. Real quick. Yeah. Give me this. Give me some old parts. Lots of old parts for a lot of the things that I wanna make. Power crystals are also acceptable, thank you. Okay. Ready? Any under here? Got a couple, let's go for this one. Seems like a lot of times you have to either pick, do you wanna be mining for minerals or going for the hidden stuff? Like, they tend to be under stone rather than, uh, minerals. So it's nice when you can find them like in a copper mine. Come on. Ew, there we go. What you got? All parts! Nice. That's what I'm looking for. Alright, oops. Ugh! Alright.